And we're live.
Okay.
Five, four, three, two, one. Committee on Finance, Tuesday, the 29th of June, 2021. Councilmember Wyatt?
Here.
Councilmember Bowman?
Present.
Councilmember Nowakowski? Councilmember Rivera?
Present.
Councilmember Wingo? Quorum is present.
From the, I know we have a busy agenda, so we're going to try to be brief because I know we have the annual action plan. So if we can start from the top, no, it's not start from the top, excuse me. Can we look at, go to number two, Mr. Majority Leader first?
Motion to take that two out of order.
And we have the deputy controller on.
Number two. Fiscal year 2021 to 2022 Capital Debt Services Fund.
Can we second the motion first, please? Can we second the motion as we took it out of order? Can we second the motion, please?
Control.
We have no question on the floor without it being seconded.
Mr. Majority Leader?
Mr. Chair, why don't you just have Brian Bowman second the motion?
Bowman, second. Let's move.
Good morning, your honorable body. File our capital debt plan for fiscal year 2021, 2022. Just like every other year, basically what we're requesting is that the Treasury Department set aside two payments during a fiscal year to cover the city's capital debt obligation for fiscal year 2021, 2022. Looked at that around, I believe, $40 million. The first part of the collection will occur during the first part of fiscal year from July 2021 through December 2021. Then the second part through January 1st all the way through June. The first collection that we're looking to cover is for $11 million. And the second collection would be for $29 million. Basically, this allow us to be able to pay our debt with property taxes. Any questions from this group to answer right now?
Question, colleagues, any questions? The money we received from the relief funds, were those dollars, can those dollars be used for this?
I don't think we could use relief funds for debt, but as in prior years, we've always paid the capital debt with property tax dollars. I'm sorry, control.
Covenant with the bondholders, we pay it out of our property taxes first.
Any other comments, colleagues, and questions? Motion to, do we need to approve this? Corporation counsel?
Sorry, couldn't unmute. Yes.
Motion to approve?
Motion approved, seconded by Councilmember Nowakowski.
Chairman, would you like to go back to number one?
No, we want to go to the next item.
I have number three, BSA Budget 2021 to 2022.
Item is open.
If this item is open.
Second.
Mr. Dow.
But I think primarily this is more for informational purposes in regards to the Buffalo Sewer. I know the controllers overseas, the financials for Buffalo Sewer, but for the most part, it's just more of FYI. The questions you guys have, nine times 10, we could bring someone on from Buffalo Sewer, just FYI for this group.
Is someone on the sewer?
No, councilmember, we don't have anyone from the sewer authority.
Okay.
If councilmember, if you have any direct questions, you could send those questions to our office. And then those questions answered for you, or we could come back at a later date.
I'm fine with it. So this is an item that needs to be approved?
To me, it's more receiving and file.
Motion to receive and file?
Motion to receive and file, seconded by Councilmember Bowman. Okay, now we can go back to the top.
I have number one, 2021 Annual Action Plan.
And we have Brendan Mahaffey to speak on this item.
Yes, thank you, Chairman Wyatt. So we have the team here, as we do every year, to talk through the annual action plan. It is, as it has been in many prior years, so I'll just give a quick highlight. The process is an extensive process, four months. Of course, it was different this year with pandemic, so all meetings that we held were virtual. There was extensive effort to push the notice out to the community to participate in those. It was a collaborative effort in terms of workshops. Even virtually, we were able to hold workshops where program managers were able to speak to residents about various initiatives that could be funded with the money. Over 100 people participated virtually in this process, citizens participated in this process. And that led to the budget that we have for you today. Just broadly speaking, for many of the funds, there is slightly more money this year, not very much really considering the percentage, about $100,000. For the CDBG side, that additional money was committed to housing because of the incredible housing needs that we have. Especially because of the pandemic at this point in time. For things like public services, we did also hit the max in terms of what, the max of the dollars that can be committed to public service and our public service agencies. So that's generally, again, the process for the streets and sidewalks that are on there. Again, that is streets and sidewalks that are being added, that's not the exclusive list. Because, you know, as we have in, I think, the prior two years now, we have every eligible street for CDBG and every eligible sidewalk for CDBG can be done now. So it's not just two or three streets that we pick, but it's the, all the eligible list. So DPW submits that list, we qualify it for eligibility, and so we have now added these streets in addition to the ones that were previously, that were approved in prior years. Same thing with the building, buildings that are being done, there's part of an assessment done by DPW. And they work to identify those buildings, addressing critical needs at first, like roofing, mechanicals and things of that nature that are really required to make sure that the building can, that the building can work. And then clearance is a nominal number this year, again, because of the decrease in the need at this point in time for clearance money because it's not as active, thankfully, now in the city of Buffalo. So that's a general broad overview, councilmember, and again, we have our council members. We have program managers who will speak to the details now, or can speak to the details now of each of their programs that are certainly open for questions to each of you at this point in time, Chairman.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, sir. Mr. Wingo.
Thank you. Mr. Mahaffey, how do we intend to market and ensure that the public is aware?
Well, through, for the housing programs, we work with our partners, there's four partners that we have right now. And again, our housing team can speak to it in more detail, that a part of their contract that we have with them is to do continuous outreach, to continually update their websites and to create materials so that people understand the various resources that are available out there. Again, that for the streets and sidewalks and the buildings and things of that nature, that is typically through our outreach process that we have and that we have conducted as part of this program. And we will continue with even, even after this. So those are the primary ways that we do the outreach, more structured in the housing context than the others. Because of, yeah, the hundreds of people we serve every year.
So in the future, when you are doing all of these, I mean, your office has always been good with this. But, you know, our office sends out a newsletter every month, and we'd like to make sure that everything that you have going as far as the housing programs are concerned, we have a graphic to put in our newsletter so that our constituencies can be informed as well. So we will be happy to help in that regard. Thank you, Mr. Mahaffey.
Yeah, and we do have, the Buffalo Urban Renewal Agency now has a communications manager specifically so that we can push this information out. And Dana Harris, who is that communications manager, will be more than happy to work with you and every single council member so that you have all the information that you have for your newsletters so that we could get it out there. As we've said, it's always important for the communication and collaboration between us, but in particular now, given the challenges that are in front of us in terms of, in particular, as we said, the housing situation that continues to unfold because of the pandemic. So again, really regular communication and collaboration between us is important, which is why we thought it was so important to have a communications manager as well in the Buffalo Urban Renewal Agency.
That is wonderful. Thank you very, very much.
Absolutely, councilmember.
Any other questions? Councilmember Bowman?
Thank you, Mr. Chair and Director Mahaffey, thank you very much. I just wanted to ask, under community facilities, I see that there's 150,000 allocated for the George Arthur Center. Do you know what those funds will be used for at this point?
Yes, I do, but I'll actually hand it over directly to, I see Commissioner Finn, we might have Deputy Commissioner Guzman on as well, so I'll ask him to speak to the details.
Yes, good morning, good morning, Chair, Councilmember Bowman, how you doing today?
Good, sir.
Yes, those, the 150 that you're seeing there is the completion of the assessment of the existing facility at George K. Arthur, separate and distinct from the project that we're working on the bond side with the, that you are involved with us on the potential assessment of the addition to the George K. Arthur Center. So these are completing the needs of the buildings, heating systems, mechanical systems, HVAC controls and what have you that will continue to improve the existing facility. And I can speak to you offline on the bond update as we are working on that. Thank you.
Thank you, look forward to it.
Anyone else? As far as the dollars that we use for the emergency assistance, can someone give us an update on that? You know, I always ask that question, I know that in the past it's been behind, and I think you've done a tremendous job of catching it up, but if you can give us an update on those funds. And also, have we talked anything, talked about kind of decentralizing that process? I know that you said HUD guidelines require so much of the details and things to be finalized and documentation. Have we had any type of thought of allowing the CBOs to do that type of work, I mean, to, they do it anyway, getting the information?
Yeah, again, I'll, I either Ivan McCray, Leslie Viswanath will speak to this details. But again, in terms of the process, I mean, we share with you like it is for, you know, a lot of pieces, the desire to be able to just move this much faster than we can, I think we've made a lot of changes to the program already so that we can, you know, we're hitting just about every efficiency I think that we can hit at this point in time. But very open to continuing those conversations with you and others to see if there is, you know, anything else that we can do. But that number is something that we regularly keep an eye on, so I'll hand it over at this point in time either to Ivan McCray or Leslie Viswanath.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and thank you, Executive Director Mahaffey. As far as decentralizing the process, councilmember, we have our CBOs doing as much as they can in the field in terms of gathering the information to build the file. The file that has to come into City Hall, we're only doing the portion that's needed to set the file up in the system and verify the information that is provided for each applicant. So as Mr. Mahaffey indicated, we'll continue to work on efficiencies over the pandemic. Our partners have transitioned to taking appointments fully remote, in a fully remote fashion. They also have been going out to residents' homes to pick up documents and things like that, but they have adjusted well. And we've moved to a digital process with some of that paperwork, so we have been able to realize some efficiency there. I'll ask that Leslie Viswanath give us an update on the production numbers for the emergency program. Because as you know, affordable housing was deemed essential and has been essential. I think we all have felt essential for many, many years, but the pandemic really put the stamp on that. We did not stop working, but we did experience a few slowdowns just because of the hesitation of residents making contact with folks from the outside, our safety protocol, et cetera. But we have done fairly well in that space. So Director Viswanath, if you would.
Great, thank you, Ivan. Good morning, councilmembers. So our goal for the emergency assistance program remains assisting 120 units per year. And the goal for application to project completion is six months. Our contractors have experienced some supply chain interruptions with resources, they have not been able to get material deliveries. There's been cost increases relating to wood, so that's obviously impacted our production, but I think that we're on target to hit that goal for this year. Are there any other questions?
Said there's a, your goal is 120 per year?
Yes.
Okay, what was the goal last year?
Oh, the goal is the same.
Is always the same. And I know we had these conversations, is there any way we can allocate more money to that particular line as opposed to the others? And I know that all of them seem important, but as far as housing, I think you all know that that's probably one of the primary things that people are in difficulties right now as far as their homes, roofs, windows, all those type of things. Are we looking to possibly increase that number at some point?
I'll just speak to that quickly, Ivan. So we also have allocated additional money to that line through CDBG CV. So this is just the regular CDBG program. So we, in terms of production numbers, you know, I would say it's going to be an extremely busy year, maybe even doubled, quite frankly, in terms of it. And also the reminder for each of you and for the community that might be listening, we have a program now so that landlords can also participate. We, I think we know that many of the landlords have had difficulty maybe making repairs because of the inability to get rent. So we now have a program to assist landlords, which we did not have before. So the volume for the Division of Housing is much higher than it has been in prior years. So again, this is just the one budget line, we also have, we're successful in getting a lead grant. So that money as well is going into a housing repair, which is being coordinated through the Buffalo Urban Renewal Agency and some other sources as well. It is going to be an extremely busy year for the Division of Housing.
So Mr. Mahaffey, since you brought up the whole thing about the dollars for home renters and things like that, what are we doing? I mean, I know it was mentioned about marketing your programs. I know that when I talk to Miss Sibilia in my district, you know, when these funds are gone, they're gone, and people are still in line. How can we assist them with, I mean, with the rental assistance, I know, but as far about the marketing, getting the information out to the public? Because I think that's so critical.
Yeah, I couldn't agree with more. Again, I think it comes down to the collaboration with the, our communications manager Dana Harris. There's lots of materials that we have at this point in time. Our materials are your materials, when you have community meetings, please distribute them. When you have community meetings, please invite us to come and explain the programs that are available. We have increased our communications network recently so that it's not just those four organizations. We have organizations like Jericho Road, not traditionally part of this network, that are pushing out information and assisting us for rental assistance and other programs, Buffalo Urban League, and, you know, many others right now, Catholic charities who are participating, Sulamadu, who's on with us, I believe. She has done a tremendous job to increase that community network, really targeting as well organizations, new Americans where there might be either language barriers or there might be, you know, other challenges to getting the information out there because this is affecting absolutely everybody at this point in time. So again, whatever you need, you know, whatever your colleagues need, whatever anybody needs, please reach out to us. And we have quite a bit of materials right now and will produce more.
Well, I thank you because I know I have my community meeting July 10th, and you, a representative from your office will be there. Dana will be there to give this information, so I'm excited because we really got to get this money out. Have we, have we done any advertising in, on, through the TV stations or through radio? Because I really haven't seen a lot of that, and you know, I can't say I see everything, but, I mean, this full court press and advertising this information for these critical dollars is just, it's so important. And I think whatever medium we can use, we have to, I know I have some transangible boards within the district that we can probably put that information, contact 311 to try to get this information out.
Yeah, we do have radio ads that have started now and specifically focused on the rental assistance program. And there is a discussion of the TV ads, I think it's bang for the buck really right now. We think the ground game, working with the community groups is really the best way, and with you and others, is really the best way to get that information out rather than the cost of a TV ad and its potential impact. Social media as well is also a medium that Dana has been focused on for getting the information out. But again, happy to share that in great detail with you.
Colleagues, any questions? I know when we do our clean sweeps, and I know we have the master at that, Mr. Mestry on. I know there's been some clean sweeps, can you talk about the clean sweeps and how they're going to be impacting Commissioner? Director, excuse me, Mestry.
Thank you, Councilman, and good morning all. Our clean sweeps has begun, we're excited this year, we always try to fine tune. And I believe that from my office is an engagement process within community. We use our 311 data, 911 data, and other data sources to help pinpoint areas in the community. And so we've been working very closely with Buffalo Urban Renewal Agency and different departments to go into communities. In fact, next week in University District, this week, we are in the Elica District, working with each one of the councilmen. An exciting partner that we had is the Harvard University, Harvard Bloomberg is helping us pinpoint using data in a more efficient way to help us pinpoint hotspots and also help us refine our process. So I'm very excited about that process. And then, again, this going on with Executive Director Brendan Mahaffey, the information that we've been, in terms of rental assistance and all of that, is going door to door. So not only are we leaving packets of information, we're knocking on doors in those specific spots where we believe there is some real specific need for individuals who need these programs. Thank you.
Thank you, Director. Any questions, colleagues, on that? Okay, now Brendan, when does this have to be approved? When does this have to be finalized?
Well, I mean, we'd obviously like as soon as possible for it. I mean, if there goes another cycle, I think that that might be fine. We would appreciate, you know, an approval today if there are no additional questions for this. And what that does is, we have, you know, a hard stop for a deadline, literally, we don't get the money if we don't meet that deadline. So it takes a lot of time for us on the backend, the administrative side. Bill Park is on with us today, who's the HUD grants administrator, who I'm sure is saying please, as soon as possible, because he has to, he's the gentleman that is inputting all of that data into the system. So again, as soon as possible, if you could, we'd certainly appreciate it.
So if we needed to add, we wanted to add additional streets or anything like that, is that something that's going to put your team out and maybe jeopardize the application?
Well, I mean, that's a conversation that we could have, you know, over the next week prior to the council meeting. Again, the, and we could talk about that, and Commissioner Finn is on right now, but they send a full list to us, eligibility is the primary concern. So you might have streets, but they have to be eligible. And we are happy to have that conversation with you if you believe that there is a street or sidewalk that is, that is missing. Happy to have that conversation with you, and we'll go through the process that we do to see that it is, you know, qualified. And then we can just, you know, talk about whether it is on the list or not, and why not, and what adjustments we can make. But we, again, our goal and our effort has been to have every eligible street and sidewalk that is in need of repair on the list. So if there's one missing, then absolutely, let's talk about it, councilmember.
Councilmember Nowakowski?
You, Mr. Chair, just two things. You know, I would like to say on the record that I will call DPW, because I do believe that one street in my district is missing, and it's Ashley Street. It's right off of Broadway, south of Broadway, in a really high need area. I was actually with Mr. Mestry when we were doing a clean sweep, and I think it was overtly aware to all of us that were knocking on doors that that street needed to be on there, but I'll follow up with DPW on that. You know, I do know the tight sensitivity of these grants, so, you know, Mr. Chair, I would make a motion to approve. And we have a week, probably, to get those in there.
Councilmember, can we, can we hold that for a moment? Because I know that we have some conversation with other things that councilmembers may have, and that's why I asked Mr. Mahaffey, if we hold this, Mr. Mahaffey, until next finance meeting, would that be an issue? Is that okay, or would that be pressing?
I think we'd still be able to meet it, but again, ideally, if we could have it now. But again, it's the pleasure of the committee to, you know, whatever it would like to do.
Councilmember, can we rescind your approval and send it without rec, just in case we need additional comments or additions?
Sure, I rescind the motion for, I'd like to make a motion to rescind.
So we rescind the motion of approval, seconded by Councilmember Bowman, and now the new motion will be to send without rec. I still have some more questions before we go with that, okay? Did you have your hand up, Councilmember Bowman?
I was thinking about a question, so I'll ask it, but just kind of back to the home repair discussion and those dollars. I just had a question, I know the city of Buffalo doesn't set the income guidelines, it comes from the top. But was there any increase in income guidelines for, you know, households that qualify for assistance for home repair dollars? A lot of the times, that's a very high volume call we get, everybody calling, needs assistance with, you know, porch, the roof. Councilmember Wyatt had touched on that, but sometimes I find in my district, people just miss the guideline by a couple dollars. Was there any increase in that income guideline this year?
There was a recent change, and again, it's a change that comes from the federal government, so we, that was recently updated. So I'll turn to Ivan hopefully with the details for that.
There were slight increases in those, in the, in the areas of Lowdamod. Hang on one second, and what I can do is, we create a chart, Councilmember Bowman, with the information from HUD, and I will have someone provide for you all the chart from last year and the chart from this year. So it'll show you in each of the income ranges what the difference is.
Perfect, okay, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
My last question, Brendan, which I bring up every time, Eight Days of Hope.
Yeah.
I know we've been talking, I know Director Mestry's been working with them. Have we come up with something to utilize their expertise to help folks in our districts that really are in need?
Yeah, I think that Director Mestry, and I'll let him speak to it, has been working on a path, we believe there is a path there, again, not with these funds, these funds would not be, they just don't fit because it would, they come with so much additional, it would slow it all down. And it would cost much more, just to quickly summarize it, that there is a path there. We are talking about specifically how we can assist. So trying to, again, I'll let Director Mestry speak to it, but some type of a proposal at this point in time, so we specifically understand how we can participate. So, awesome?
Thank you, Executive Director Mahaffey, and thank you for the question, Councilman. We've been having very high level conversations with Steve Tabor. As you know, there's a relationship that Eight Days of Hope has with the city not being its home, but also the work that they've been doing, they've done tremendous work in University District, they're now going into the Maston District, working with faith-based organizations to identify homes, they have done that. I've gotten a list of different priority things that they're going to do, working on gutters, concrete work, painting, windows, yard work, doors, porches, roofs, tree work, electrical siding, and some small demo. We're also working with them with our Parks Department, they have, they're doing a community project that they're going to be adopting a park and having a community effort, and our building inspectors have been working very closely with that. It's a real holistic effort on a city to support an initiative, quite frankly, where they generate their own dollars. And so you've heard that the cost of lumber and wood and things are quite frankly, where they generate their own dollars. And so you've heard that the cost of lumber and wood and things are up. We've taken that into consideration. Again, working with the executive director, we see that we, there is a path that we can help them on a financial on way, and we're just kind of working that out. And so I'm excited about that. We'll keep you updated on that. I'm sure Steve will as well, and we will make sure that we'll keep you updated.
Thank you. I'm I'm excited to hear that. I I think they, you know, because of the demographic in our city, it it just makes sense to have an organization like Eight Days of Hope and and involved in what we're trying to do because, like I said, you know, I saw firsthand and I still hear from residents who were affected and they helped. And, you know, they still sing their praises. So it's a long term impact. And I just think that for a city our size and our poverty rates, an organization like them in the fold could be hugely impactful. So thank you all for continuing to work that relationship with Eight Days of Hope. Any other comments, colleagues? Okay, if there's no other comments, motion to send.
Motion for such a recommendation.
Motion to send without rec, seconded by Councilmember Nowakowski.
Thank you very much, everybody.
Thank you. Take the table items, four and five. Taking the table item four or five, seconded by Councilmember Bowman.
Item number four, April twenty twenty one cash flow report.
Items open.
This item is open. I know we have the deputy controller on. He can briefly talk about it because we know this one is really, really old now. Deputy Controller.
Yes. I don't, I think we, did we do the overview of that already?
This is. Okay, if you want to table, we can table.
Oh, no, no, here, here. We don't want to table it because it's more as a FYI. We have a number of previous cash flow reports out there. So we would look to have them actually receiving file. I think the April one is the most current one. And we are in the process of submitting the May cash flow report, as we stated in the past. It's just an overview of the city's cash far as the receipts and disbursements for the month. So if this group has any questions in regards to the balance as of April, answer now, and we'll be discussing May's report in the next couple of weeks.
Questions, gentlemen? Okay, we can receive.
Thank you.
Seconded by Councilmember Nowakowski. Next item.
Item number five. Audit second follow-up eligibility for health insurance benefits.
Items open.
This is a follow-up to the, it's an audit, internal audit that our audit department prepared. And basically, what we did with that item was we just follow up with the administration in regards to eligibility requirements for dependents. And based off our analysis, we still had a number of open issues in regards to dependency. We understand that the pandemic probably prevented the contractor to not finalize the eligible dependents. And we're just putting out there that this is still something that the city, we need to verify, make sure everyone is eligible because it is a huge expense to the city.
Questions, colleagues?
Just one question. What what did the audit find? What are the numbers? Where were the deficiencies, I'm sure?
Well, I I think it was just to verify that everyone that is considered a dependent of a active or an employee of the city that they actually were eligible. I think based off the audit, it's like two hundred certain people that we didn't hear from. I'd almost were under low under three thousand city employees. So that's the minimum amount, minimum amount, but we just want to verify to everyone that the city is paying healthcare for that they are eligible.
Do do we have a final date that we should be getting this information?
To my knowledge, no. I'm not, I know Commissioner Astrid is online or someone from the benefits department.
Now that the pandemic has slowed down, they are going to make more person-to-person contact with the two hundred employees. And those are two hundred dependents, not two hundred, you know, it's not two hundred employees. So there might be a family with three or four kids who have not sent in their response. So they are in the process of gearing up again, and hopefully, I believe by the end of the fiscal year, they'll have, excuse me, calendar year, have the answer on all those.
But should should that timeline be shortened? Because by the end of the calendar year, that means that we're spending out money that possibly for people who are not eligible.
Right. And then they also, they're comparing, we just had us our healthcare annual our sign up in April. So they're comparing those verifications that are missing with the people who had sent them in. So there is a process right now that are trying to clean up that number.
But can we update the timeline so that we're not waiting to the end of the year? Is that something that you should be doing or is that something we need to contact benefits?
That would be HR, but I can reach out to them and get a more accurate timeline from them.
Yeah, I mean, we want to be reasonable, but we still don't want to spend money that if if they're not eligible, they shouldn't be getting. So I mean, if we could look at a September date or something, end of September.
Yeah, I can reach out and get a timeline for you.
Okay. Any other questions, colleagues? Okay, motion to table. Seconded by Councilmember Nowakowski.
No further items. Motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn, seconded by Councilmember Bowman.